The show we call this public hearing to order. Thank you. Then the record show we call this regular public hearing to order on September 13th, 2022 at 6:03 PM. I will have, I'll be reading from a script as we are doing our first public hearing on the 2022-23 tentative budget, correct, Madam Attorney?
Correct.
This is the first of two required public hearings on Leon County budget for fiscal year 2022-2023. The second and final public hearing will be held on Tuesday, September 20th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. If you wish to speak in person, please complete a speaker card and turn it in to the clerk. Citizens who register to speak virtual, virtually or have virtual comments will be asked to speak prior to the commission taking the vote on the millage rate and budget. Now, the county administrator, Mr. Long, will read the millage rate into the public record, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, bear with us on the statutorily prescribed language as follows. The proposed aggregate millage rate is 8.8144 mils, which is 4.86% over the aggregate rolled-back millage rate of 8.4060 mils. Advalorem revenues will increase due to an upturn in property values and will be used to support sustaining a quality level of essential services countywide. Commissioners, you have provided the necessary guidance during the budget development process for the tentative budget. All the direction provided in the various agendas and workshops during the budget process have been included in the FY 23 tentative budget. However, if you desire staff, staff is still prepared to provide a brief presentation on the budget if necessary. Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you. Is there any need for a presentation? We good? All right. At this time, the individuals that are appearing in person and virtually are allowed to speak. Are there any speakers on the, on the budget?
There are no speakers on this item.
All right. Florida statute requires that the board to address, for the board to address the millage rate before addressing each budget. The board must vote on each millage rate and budget separately. I will now enter the following motion, entertain the following motion. Number one, adopt via tax resolution the tentative FY 2022-2023 countywide millage rate of 8.3144 mils.
Mr. Chair, Coach here. I'm sorry, Vice Chair, I move adoption.
Thank you. Adoption has been moved by Commissioner Cummings, their second commissioner, second by Commissioner Minor. Any objection? Seeing none, show it as passed unanimously. Oh, wait, we good? Yeah, we good? Show it as passed unanimously. Number two, adopt via tax resolution the tentative FY 2022-2023 countywide budget. I think that was Commissioner Welch. Okay, Commissioner Minor, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. Uh, any objection? Seeing none, show it as passed six to zero. Number three, adopt via tax resolution the tentative FY 2022-2023 emergency management services MSTU millage rate of 0.5000 mils. Motion to effect. Moved by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Cummings. Any objection? Seeing none, show it as passed six to zero. Next, four, adopt via tax resolution the tentative FY 2022-2023 emergency medical services MSTU budget. Your motion is such. So moved, Mr. Chairman. Moved by the chairman to second. Seconded by Commissioner Dozier. Any objection? Seeing none, short as approved. Last but not least, I will now entertain a motion to direct staff to advise, to advertise in accordance with the Florida statute, uh, the tentative millage rate and budgets for fiscal year 2022-2023 and the date and time and places of the public hearing to adopt the final millage rates and budget for fiscal year 2022-2023. Is there a motion today?
Chairman, we move that direction to staff.
Motion's been made by the chairman, their second, seconded by Commissioner Welch. Any objection? Showing none, show it as passed six to zero. All right. Have we headed to business for item number 34?
That does it, Mr. Chairman.
All right. While our chairman gets ready, I'll go ahead and go to item number 35.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number 35 seeks the board's approval to conduct the first and only public hearing to approve the non-advalorem assessment role for the local provider participation fund, non-advalorem special assess, non-advalorem assessment, rather. Based on recent changes in federal law, this program was established last year. I'm sure the board may remember that at the request of our local hospitals to assist them in drawing down additional federal Medicaid funding. Uh, commissioners, I could go into more detail on this. Again, I, I know you're all well versed. We're recommending options one through four. There are representatives available, but only if needed to speak on this item. Uh, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back to you.
Mr. Administrator, any speaks on item?
Excuse me?
Are there any speakers on the item?
Uh, only if needed.
Okay. All right. Seeing none, is there a motion made for staff recommendation? Motion made by Commissioner Dozier, their second?
Second.
Seconded by the chairman, all those in favor, they can, I. Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Item number 36.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will hand this one over to our county attorney.
Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, agenda item number 36 is the first and only public hearing, uh, the purpose of which is to receive comments from the public concerning the proposed refinancing of the Leon County Florida Educational Facilities Revenue Bond, Series 2018-2018 Holy Comfort Episcopal School Inc. project, which financed, refinanced and reimbursed the acquisition, construction, renovation and equipment and equipping of the performing arts and cafeteria building expansion located at 2001 and 2100 Fleishman Road, Tallahassee, Florida. Uh, the public hearing was advertised in the Tallahassee Democrat on September 2nd, 2022, as statutorily required. Uh, and, uh, at this time, is there a representative available to speak and answer questions?
Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Good evening. Kyle Phelps, uh, 1749 Copperfield Circle, Tallahassee, Florida.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Um, so, uh, what is the public purpose of the bond issue?
Yeah, the project refinanced with proceeds of the bond makes a significant contribution to the public health and economic growth of the county, provides and preserves gainful employment in the county and provides education of students in Leon County.
Uh, and will Leon County be responsible for repaying the bond?
The bond will expressly state that Leon County, Florida is not liable to pay principal or interest on the bond.
And what is the maximum amount of the bond that will be issued?
Yeah, the bond will not exceed 5,635,000.
Uh, does this issuance in any way take away any funding from the Leon County school system?
No. It only allows Holy Comfort to get a better structure on their outstanding debt.
Uh, at this time, um, are there any members of the public? Do we have any speakers?
Any speakers, Mr. Administrator? Mr. Administrator, any speakers?
We have no speakers on this item.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, um, it would be appropriate, if the board is so inclined, uh, to, uh, consider option one, conduct the first and only tough for a public hearing and adopt the related resolution and financing agreement, uh, attached, uh, to your agenda items, attachment one, for the debt refinancing.
Pursuant to our policy, I'll take him. I'm looking for a motion for staff recommendation. Moved by Commissioner Minor, seconded by Commissioner Cummings. I need discussion on item. Seeing none, all those in favor, they can, I. Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, you want to take it in? You got it.
Mr. Chair? I'm sorry, I was, uh...
I mean, take it in or you got it.
Yeah, take it in for me.
All right. The reason that we're all here today, or one of the biggest reasons we're all here today is, uh, item number 29, Mr. Administrator, can you introduce the item, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, item number 29, uh, commissioners, uh, at your June meeting, the board requested in an agenda item to consider naming options in honor of Commissioner Jimbo Jackson, um, in honors of his decades of service as a county commissioner and educator and a leader in the Fort Braden community. Uh, this item, Commissioner seeks your approval to acquire the Fort Braden Community Center from Leon County Schools, uh, and rename it, uh, in honor of Commissioner Jimbo Jackson. Uh, commissioners, currently, the Fort Braden Community Center is owned by Leon County Schools and since 1994 has been leased by the county for a dollar a year. Uh, at this year's retreat, the board approved, uh, Commissioner Jackson's initiative to work with Leon County Schools to acquire the Fort Braden Community Center. In exchange for the community center, this item recommends that the county provide additional capacity in a county-owned stormwater facility, um, uh, for, uh, Leon County School Board, uh, and for the county to accept the maintenance of the one-tenth of a mile roadway currently maintained, uh, by, uh, Leon County Schools. Uh, the Leon County School Board is, is scheduled to meet to consider, uh, this exchange, uh, at their October 11th meeting. Um, and, uh, lastly, uh, Commissioners, Commissioner Jackson's family has expressed their, um, uh, support, uh, for the proposed renaming. We're recommending options one through three, and we have no speakers on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Uh, the only thing I would ask is that we, as we carry this motion forward, first of all, I want to say thank you to Leon County Schools for, for being willing to, uh, hand over that property or trade that property with us. I think that's real big, uh, for us and giving us the ability to, to honor our, our, uh, dearly beloved and past, uh, Commissioner Jackson. As we move forward into this, uh, start the planning of it, I would ask that, uh, because Commissioner Jackson was a principal and a student in Fort Braden area, that we, um, honor him together with the school board, uh, so that we can have them be a part of the, the main ceremony, naming ceremony, ceremony, uh, when we get to that point. So I don't know if that would be in need to be a part of the motion that we have moving forward, or is that kind of just instruction? Okay, good, good, as long as we can, we can, we can make that happen. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, well, I think I got recognized first, but no doubt every single one of us, I'm going to guess, would want to make this motion. If only in the record, it could reflect every one of us making the motion and every one of us seconding, and I think that would be fair. Um, it does strike me that, um, Fort Braden community has had two incredible, powerful leaders, and they will now have two buildings named after Commissioner James Hollis and Commissioner Jimbo Jackson. That is significant. Um, had the honor of serving with both of them. Excuse me. Need to turn off the mic for that part. Um, I echo what you said about, uh, superintendent in the school board. Um, there've been, I'm guessing, a lot of conversations over many, many years, and this is a nice resolution, helping us, helping the schools. Um, so I want to compliment our staff, Mr. County Administrator, you and your staff, as well as schools, for really coming to a, a really good and fairly simple decision on this. We should work collaboratively. I love the idea of including the students, teachers, staff, Fort Braden, in the ceremony. Um, but really, for this item, I mean, there's a lot of administrative moves in this, but, um, this is about Jimbo Jackson, Commissioner Jackson, and honoring him, and I'm very proud to make the motion, um, for the recognition.
Motion made by Commissioner Dozier, uh, seconded by the entire board, but since he's the senior on the board and... Chairman, I'm, I'll let the, uh, chair have the second on that. Um, the other thing that I would, I wanted to make mention of while we, while we are having this conversation is that, um, that we, we are able to, to think about how we're going to, um, maybe honor the history of, of that school. Cause I think right now, as, as you, as you see it, um, like I said, he did actually, I think he actually went to that school, didn't he? Didn't he?
Went to Godby for high school.
I'm talking about that.
But the elementary part.
Okay, okay. Well, I, I'll save that part. I have it, that offline, but I just want, I just want to say myself, I really appreciate the fact that we had, we all had the opportunity to serve with someone who's such a, a gentleman and, and, and statesman in the way that he operated his, not only his school, but himself. And so, uh, this is a special moment for all of us. I appreciate the, the motion made by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by our chairman. Any other speakers on the item? Uh, Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I just wanted to say, you know, obviously, I think it's wholly appropriate what we're doing, and Commissioner Jackson, as we sit here with that empty chair and is sort of ever-present in this chamber and in our hearts and, and, um, you know, such a gracious man. I think this is a perfect, um, sentiment for him, and I can't help but, but laugh a little bit inside, knowing that Charles High School's gonna, um, gonna, gonna, uh, use some county, uh, stormwater facilities, uh, to accommodate this trade and, and, you know, as a, as a classroom teacher and educator, Commissioner Jackson, you know, you're such a part of a community like that. And so, as, as I continue my service walk and, and working in the Northeast and see my, my school continue to grow, it'll just be another reminder of Commissioner Jackson and his, his example. So, just wanted to say that.
I, I now remember what I was going to say. You can see I paused there for a second. I was going to ask that if the board can request action from the school board to, uh, bring a resolution or proclamation, whichever one they do, uh, celebrating Commissioner Jackson, uh, that day or the day of the celebration, I would appreciate that as well. Um, I'm sure they're going to do it on their own, but just a formal request from us that, uh, as they come to celebrate that moment with us, that they bring forth a proclamation or a resolution to do such. Any other speakers? Uh, I said Commissioner Minor, I'm going to go, uh, Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I just, um, you know, Commissioner Welch had some very, uh, I think, important points to say about how we always feel that he's here. Uh, I, actually, I kind of look at it from the other perspective. I, the meetings that we've had with, um, with Jimbo gone, I think have been, his absence is constantly felt. I, I think, I think all of you probably feel it too. I mean, it's, it's, it, there's, we miss him, and he's, he, you know, he should be here. Um, and the fact that he's not here is, is something that I think about many times during each of our meetings, um, since he's passed. But, um, it's an honor to, to, to support this motion. Um, I think it's a, a fitting legacy, and I think he'd be very proud. Thank you.
Commissioner Cummings.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. You know, um, Commissioner Jackson was one of the first commissioners to greet me my first day on the, the commission. He was my commission mate, um, initially, and even during his passing, we had shifted around, but we always sat next to each other. Um, one thing that struck me about him was he was just a great humanitarian. He loved his district, but he loved Leon County. He loved the schools. He loved the, the children, um, in his school. So I certainly support this particular item. It's just, um, you know, it's emotional, I know for all of us, but he will certainly be remembered, and I think this is just a, a small token of how we can remember him as a fellow commissioner and in his Fort Braden community. And I also just want to thank, um, the county administrator. I think collaboration with other governmental entities, um, has to be something that we do more often. And so I just want to thank the county administrator for working this out with the Leon, Leon County School Board and exchanging services for the benefit of our community to honor this great man. So thank you, thank you very much for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Any more comment?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Besides Chairman, commit, uh, members of this body, uh, the loss of a member of a body is never expected like this. And certainly, um, we have, uh, reacted and we have, uh, with great dignity, I believe, um, sought to honor every term. And this is an additional effort. You know, um, Great Britain is, uh, in every measure seeking to place honor upon, uh, their queen. And I believe that, uh, what we're doing, um, in similar measure is to place honor upon a political public statesman, uh, and educator and a community pillar. Commissioner Jackson, before we came up with the word 32304 and poverty, um, we had not codified it, we had not measured, we did not have the data, but he understood, empathized, saw and knew his constituency base, their challenges, uh, their life struggles. Without having data of those measurements that we have, that have come to fruition and have been codified in, in book form. And his ability as an educator to know the sociology of his students, his parents, and in many ways, he was a pastor, a deacon, a father, grandfather to young people. There are some names worth capturing, magnifying, illuminating, and remembering for posterity. And it is without a doubt to me that Commissioner Jimbo Jackson for Fort Braden community is a name worth honoring in this way. And so it's without reservations, um, commissioners, that I join and we join unanimously in, um, offering one additional incremental, uh, salute to respect and honor Jimbo Jackson. And I'm very proud to vote with you, um, in this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, want to send a shout out to Commissioner Jackson's family. Uh, and, um, know that we're, we're thinking about him today as we, as we prepare for this naming opportunity. Um, one of the last conversations I had with Commissioner Jackson, I was actually supposed to speak it well. I went to speak at Fort Braden, and, uh, I was calling him because I was running a little late, and he, 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 he didn't pick up. When I got there, they said to me, they said, "Oh, he's in the hospital, he's just having a little procedure, he doesn't want anybody to know about it." And after I got done speaking, and I think it might have been the day of, the day after, he called me, he said, "How'd it go?" I said, "Well, well." He said, "Yeah, man, I'm doing all right," you know? And that's who, that's who Jimbo was. That man was fighting for his life, but he was doing all right. He didn't want anybody to, to, to worry about him, he didn't want anybody to feel sorry for him. He didn't feel sorry for himself. He fought all the way to the end. Um, and that's kind of legacy that, that he'll carry with me and hopefully with the rest of, um, our community. And more so than that, I think that, if anything, exemplifies what District Two and Fort Braden is. They are absolute fighters out there, and I couldn't think of a better person to, to think about when you think about that community and, and how he represented them and who he was to them. Jimbo Jackson was Fort Braden and, and District Two, and I appreciate that about him. So, I look forward to the naming opportunity we're going to have there. Motion's been made by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by our chairman, all those in favor, they can, I. Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Item number 30, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, item number 30, Commissioner seeks your approval to issue an invitation to bid for the exclusive franchise to provide waste collection services in the unincorporated area of Leon County. Uh, commissioners, I'll provide just a, a brief overview. Uh, the county provides, uh, for this service by awarding an exclusive franchise to a single solid waste provider. Uh, as you all know, uh, our current contract for these services expires, uh, September 2023, next year. Uh, to allow adequate time for transition to a possible new, uh, vendor, this item seeks board direction to issue the invitation to bid, uh, for these services for the unincorporated area with the recommended award coming back to you all, uh, in December of this year. Uh, commissioners, as I shared at, at the last meeting, uh, because of inflation, rising fuel costs, supply chain issues, again, we're anticipating, um, uh, seeing rate increases for curbside collections. Uh, we're seeing it throughout Florida, uh, and we're anticipating this occurring in Leon County as well. So we've taken efforts to mitigate, uh, to the extent possible, uh, rate increases for Leon County residents, um, uh, in the solicitation of this bid. Uh, and so the county has thoroughly evaluated opportunities to modify the current, uh, level of service. As part of this evaluation, the county has engaged industry experts and evaluated well over a dozen other solicitations to ensure that the, our recommended specifications and standard are in line with, uh, industry best practices and, and again, uh, will result in, in mitigating, uh, cost increases ultimately to the subscribers. Uh, commissioners, the standard level of services not being recommended to change, uh, with, uh, subscribers receiving weekly, uh, waste recycling and yard debris collection. As detailed in the item, there are several service adjustments being recommended. All adjustments, uh, adjustments mitigate cost or have no cost increases, uh, associated with them. While I'm not planning to go over, um, each one of these adjustments in detail, uh, please know that Maggie Terrio is, is here and available, uh, to provide a more thorough overview or answer any questions, uh, should you have those commissioners. With that, I will just, uh, say that we are, um, recommending, uh, option one. Uh, I do want to note that we have, um, one speaker on Zoom, and we have, uh, Mr. Childery, uh, here representing, uh, Waste Pro, uh, only if needed, uh, for any questions. Uh, and Mr. Chairman, uh, if you'd like, I could go to our, uh, first and only Zoom speaker on this item.
All right, let's go to our Zoom speaker.
Uh, Daniel Palmer.
Yes, I am he.
Thank you.
Can you hear?
We can hear you loud and clear, sir.
Yes, my name is Daniel Palmer, P-A-L-M-E-R, 2212 Turnbridge Court, Tallahassee, 32311. Um, I guess say this in preparatory to what I'm about to say. Um, I was born at Dale Mayberry Field Hospital here in Leon County in 1948, uh, born and raised in Tallahassee. Um, I noticed on the agenda and I watched, um... Um, I noticed on the agenda and I watched um um Bruno Street being renamed for Miss Meek. And it T-boned into Palmer Avenue. That is my grandfather. Palmer Avenue goes up to Fan U and all the way down to Gulf Terrace Drive. So that's a connection that I saw on the agenda. And then when I saw the Capital Medical Society, We Care, my father was born and raised in Tallahassee, Dr. George Palmer. He practiced medicine here in Tallahassee for over fifty years, was president of the Capital uh City Medical Society and also for the Florida Medical Association. So I have a connection to Tallahassee, so I'm not coming in and then leaving, okay? But I have a real problem with Waste Pro that I'm not going to go into detail. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. We can hear you.
But it began on Wednesday, August the thirty-first, continued Thursday, September the first, Friday, September the second, and then Saturday, September the third. And I have spoken to the local people, um Lloyd Childery, who's the division manager, and he said that the problem was a failure to understand something correctly, a misunderstanding. The truth of the matter is, what happened was a misrepresentation from uh Waste Pro um that they did not provide services and promised to do it, did not do it, promised to do it, did not do it, promised to do it and did not do it. So I I don't know what else to do. Except I'm I'm I noticed on the uh contract between Waste Pro and um the county, there was a an amendment saying that if there are enough complaints against Waste Pro that have not been resolved satisfactorily to the county, they can um invalidate the contract. I'm glad to talk to anybody about this.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your comment. Uh, we'll go now, any other speakers? Uh, Mr. Childery, you're here just in case, uh, if any questions need to be answered. I'm going to go to our chairman first, Commissioner.
Um, Mr. Palmer. I think he's gone. Is Mr. Palmer hung up?
What if he dropped?
Oh, he dropped. I want to say Mr. Palmer um indicated that his father was uh Dr. George Palmer. He mentioned that Palmer Avenue, which is a street that runs uh east and west alongside uh Lee Hall, uh, it's a street that uh it took a long time to get the city of Tallahassee to put a sidewalk, the entrance of AMU. Uh, eventually, uh, it it did occur. Thank God. But Dr. Palmer's daddy was my doctor um as a child. He was a pediatrician at an office uh right where Monroe and Thomasville split. And you go to the right, that's Thomasville, and right on the hill, top of the hill, little brick building, uh, was Dr. Palmer's office. And um, speaking of things personal, uh, I would like very much for Mr. Palmer's um concerns, if we captured his number and information uh to be followed up on. Might also say that I it's my belief in Commissioner Dozier may have more specific um information, but I think that Dr. George Palmer's father may have been a physician uh as well in our community. And um, I do recall growing up that one of the things of note, black people couldn't go uh to see white doctors. And um, Mr. Palmer, Dr. Palmer, um, did not have that policy, uh, saw all patients, um, was universally willing to treat people. And it that being his reputation, uh, it makes solid sense. And I never knew what Palmer Avenue meant, but that uh a man whose uh name placed right there on the um same entrance to the Fan U Hospital uh coincided, should be. And it's good to have a name that comforts and that speaks to the universality of service and commitment to all people, to be um contiguous to the number one public HBCU in America. So I wanted to share that with Dr. Palmer, I mean, Mr. Palmer, about his family. And also, um, I don't know, two, three elections ago, um, Dr. Palmer found my campaign office and stopped by and shocked me. I thought I was had to get a shot, you know? And um, I was always scared of him. And um, usually it meant I was going to get hurt. But um, I was very glad to see him, that he remembered me, um, and came by to say hello and his wife. So very, very appreciative, and I want very dearly to make sure that issues that which you may have um can warrant our um steadfast and utmost attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Can you have somebody reach out to Mr. Palmer and uh tend to his issue, please, sir?
And also, I want to say that Lynn Palmer uh worked um and was instrumental in uh really helping me to acclimate as an assistant to Governor Child. And um Lynn was a daughter-in-law of uh of uh Dr. George Palmer. Thank you.
Mr. Administrator, are we good on that? Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Chair, is that a motion for staff recommendation?
Sir?
Is that a motion for staff recommendation as well?
What you say?
No. Commissioner Dozier.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you said.
Um, Mr. Vice Chair, I'll uh I'll make a motion for staff recommendation and then some comments.
Thank you. Uh, staff recommendation has been moved, option number one, moved by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you. Um, uh, I I want to compliment staff, this county administrator, um, everyone who's worked on this. I, this is a heavy lift to um work through not only this type of bid process, but also do the review of um what has changed since two thousand thirteen or even three years ago when we looked at this. Um, I really appreciate the new technology, the tracking systems. I think um that will, whomever is selected for this contract, I think that will help us address um issues if and when they do come up, um, and hopefully improve service as well. Um, there's a lot of good elements in this. I I think it was a fair um adjustment to, say, reduce the pile of yard debris, um, have a cap on that amount, things like that. So I I just appreciate, I mean, this gets really, I want to stay in the weeds, but you know, maybe we'll come up with in the rubbish, something that doesn't really work, um, about a lot of details. But as you as we all know, the costs are going up and we have to take those steps in order to try to get the best price for Leon County residents in the unincorporated area. Having said that, and um, boy, thank you for being here today. I know this is not going to surprise you. Um, said it a few months ago, and I will not be sitting at the Sias when you all take up the results of this bid process. So I will lean in one last time and say, we have been through the same conversation for years. And things get better for a time, and then the complaints start again. Um, my office, Gary Zier, took a count of the calls that we've received just in the last few months. And I'm, he's going to hate this, but I'm not looking at the number right now, his good count. It was about thirty calls just since January. And it drops off over the summers, people are traveling, but it was more than the year before. And I think we saw that in the last quarterly report, that the um the calls and even liquidated damages were on the rise again. It may not be a huge number out of the total number of residential customers, but it is significant, it is consistent, and I have a lot of concerns about what's going to happen in the future if we do sign another contract with Waste Pro. Having said that, this is the time for Waste Pro and for any other company to step up and to show us, share the county, share the county residents, how they are going to address issues we've had in the past and improve services. And that that brings me back, Mr. Vice Chairman, to, I don't know who's doing what these days, um, is to um the the bid document itself. I think this gives a lot of direction to any company who's going to bid on what we want to see, the level of service we want to see, and how hard our staff has worked to um look ahead at what issues, you know, how to control costs. So I think we got a great start. I'm confident in the process moving forward, and um I really encourage this board to reflect on the quarterly, those quarterly or six-month reports that we've received um over the last few years, not just as judgment on anyone, but as a way to assess what we need going forward. Um, that's it, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, Commissioner Minor, Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I, Commissioner Dozier uh stated a lot of things I was going to point out, so I'll just, I'll be brief. Um, I want to thank um county staff and the county administrator for putting together this agenda item. Uh, when you do a an ITV, an invitation to bid, you have to do a lot of the work upfront because you have to define exactly what you're going to be looking for so that respondents um provide, you know, their their estimate of what the cost is going to be, and we're comparing apples to apples to apples. Uh, an RFP is a lot simpler, you just kind of put a broad statement out there and then see what comes back in terms of what forms of service people might provide. Um, a lot of work has gone into this. I know it's only maybe, what, five pages of an agenda item, but the the work from staff to maybe to craft this ITV or to to craft ITV when it gets issued, I think is going to be very important. And um that will help us, as well as the public, be able to take a look at um at the bids and um and 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 help us make sure that we are making a good decision for the next contract term. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just um want to say, I anticipate this will have a lot of public input, or I I will hear a lot of um opinion from my constituents on this issue. Uh, we get a lot of calls in regards to Waste Pro in District Four. Um, I want to commend staff to Mr. Minor's point. Uh, I think that a lot of the new requirements in the in the bid um are really appropriate, things as small as making sure that the the cans are left upright with the lids closed. Because I can tell you, you know, it's a pain when it rains every afternoon and the lid has been left open. So small things like that, which, you know, I think uh the the parameters that have been set in the in the invitation are really appropriate. And I think if the public, anticipating that the public's going to have a lot of interest in this issue, I would encourage people to look at the invitation to bid. And then I look forward to a fair and objective evaluation of the submitted bids, um, recognizing that it, you know, this is one of those things that's uh, you know, it's it's a simple job, but it's a hard job, right? And it's um, you know, it's just, it's one of those unglamorous things that uh is crucial to a functioning society. So just want to encourage folks again to check out the bid, uh, and then, of course, when we get the, check out the invitation, and of course, when we get the bids, you know, take a look at them and see what the new requirements are, see what the new um expectations are, and then, you know, subsequently look at the costs associated with that. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Cummings?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I'd just like to ask a question of the county administrator, if I can. Uh, I I really believe that a lot of the quality insurance uh insurance items that uh have been indicated would go a long way into uh quelling some of the issues that, you know, that we hear about, that that citizens call and complain about. But my question is, are those uh quality insurance items, are those self-monitoring? Is there a liaison with the county that that uh will be working with whoever is selected to provide the those waste management services, or how is that envisioned?
The answer is yes, and very closely and and very comprehensively, but um but but Maggie Terrio could provide greater detail on that.
Right.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, Commissioner Cummings, yes. So in my role as department director, I'm uh deeply involved in not only the bid, but uh contract uh compliance. But even further, we have a full-time employee that the board authorized adding to our staff a few years ago, actually from prior liquidated damages, so the position has been uh paid for. Um, that's Emery Smith. Many of you may know him by face or name, uh, many of our residents do. Leon County employee, contract compliance, and his only contract of focus is solid waste collection.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And let me just add this last comment, too. We've gotten uh, you know, certain level of complaints in my office as well. But in interacting with the community, and I mentioned this to the county administrator, that I have had individuals uh come up to me and say, look, I have absolutely no complaints about waste management, they've been great. And so I just want us to recognize that when people are satisfied with no complaints, they don't call and express their satisfaction most of the time. Okay? So I just wanted to put that out there, Mr. County Administrator. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Chair? I I defer Commissioner Dozier, uh, if you come back to me. Commissioner Dozier?
I just, um, I was going to add a quick comment about uh our our public speaker earlier, but um Commissioner Cummings, you you were absolutely right in that statement. I would just say that um I think a lot of folks call their district commissioners. I don't know how much, Commissioner Maddox, for yourself, some people email all of us. But I do think historically, particularly District Two and District Five, but I I mean, I hear you District Four, you know, and and Three, you get calls as well. Um, uh, my experience is more people come to their district commissioner than at-large. Um, just as as just a side note, but you were absolutely right. We we don't ever hear from uh people who are satisfied with things as much as the people who have complaints, and that's true for every issue. Um, Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to let you all know that um uh my commission A, Gary Zier, did talk with Mr. Palmer um several times last week. He is a constituent, so um you had passed this off to the county administrator, this county administrator, you know, if you'd like an update on that. But um I'm glad he he raised his voice here at the commission meeting, but um my office has been in touch with him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, my my question relative to complaints um that might have been received. Um, Mr. Mr. Ray, can you tell us, please, um, relative, the word relative comes to mind, uh, how many homes are being served and uh relative to that number of homes? Are we talking about a high percentage, uh, ten percent, um, nine percent, um, twelve percent? Help us to understand how many calls we're getting compared to the number of homes that we may have uh for which they have contract services.
There are approximately thirty thousand subscribers. Um, so again, I'd ask Maggie, I'm not sure if she's done that that level of number crunching, um, but it fluctuates, and and you know that, Commissioners, it it fluctuates based on uh issues and and responsiveness to addressing issues when they arise, uh, and and that sort of thing. But Maggie could could speak to more to the point.
Sure. Um, thirty thousand subscribers in our communities, thirty thousand households. Of those, um, I would say one percent or less um equates to liquidated damages, but with the caveat that not every liquidated damage is directly related to the resident and the service they receive receive at the curb. It could be uh related to behind-the-house service, um, things that are more contractually related as well. So that one percent is not necessarily indicative of all uh of the liquidated damages.
What location or geographic region are most of these complaints coming from?
We don't track it in that that manner. Uh, we don't engage the residents um necessarily by district or or area.
So um, the number, I heard, the number thirty, since the first of the year, we've gotten thirty complaints. Um, is that what I think I heard a commissioner reference the word thirty. Is that the number you have?
If I understood those earlier comments, that was received by a particular office, not necessarily reflective of liquidated damages or that the county has received.
What are the 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 numbers of numbers that that your office is getting from all of? What are the numbers of numbers that your office is getting from all of us?
Yes. So calls and complaints, although terminology would seem the same, are two distinct things. We track the legitimate complaints. I'll just read the numbers for the last four months for a recent reference. In April, we are at 400, 600, 800, and 300. That's on a monthly basis.
Okay. So I'm not sure how many times they go around, but we're getting at the high point, 800 complaints in one month, over, I guess, eight. Curious which you pick up. We get picked up, no, four times. I'm not sure, but they get, they do pickup service once a week, right? And I'm not sure, Alan, how much is 800 out of 30,000? Is that, is that like a?
Yeah, real, real small. Real, real small.
Okay. So the word relative, again, when we're talking about complaints, I mean, we get them, and we don't like no complaints. And, you know, to tell you, Commissioner Cummings, what I'm trying to say is that I was crushed that I didn't get 100% voter approval in my last election. I mean, I really was. I thought my report call was kind of good, but I got some complaints. But relative to my opponents, I did kind of good. And I think your point about the satisfaction index seems to be running a whole lot higher than the complaint column, but satisfaction often is not conveyed or transferred to either us or to Maggie's office. So there's a caveat, and we have 30,000 homes being serviced, and these complaints, I think the most recent being 300, ain't all that bad. But of course, we're always striving for perfection. That's why, Commissioner Maddox, I encourage you to strive to get 100% voter support. You know, if you get 50.1%, that'd be good. That'd be good, but 100% would be better.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So I believe Commissioner Dozier made the motion for option number one. It was seconded by Commissioner Minor. Any objection? Six, zero, short is passed. We move to the next item. Item number 31, appointment up to the Juvenile Justice Circuit Two Advisory Board and the Value Adjustment Board, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, let me just say the next three items, which would round out your general business agenda, are all appointment items, and I have no speaker cards on any of them, so just heads up. This should be fairly efficient. The first one you'd mentioned is for a commissioner appointment. So commissioner appointments to the Juvenile Justice Circuit Two Advisory Board as well as the Value Adjustment Board. Again, the item seeks your approval to appoint a commissioner to these two groups. Option one, again, is to appoint one commissioner to the Juvenile Justice Circuit Two Advisory Board for the remainder of the unexpired term. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back to you to facilitate the vote.
All right. Any nominations for the circuit?
I move that we nominate, Mr. Chairman, the next commissioner of District Two.
I guess we can do that, can't we?
Why not? Yeah.
Commissioner Meyer, I'm sorry, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, makes a motion that whoever's the sitting next District Two Commissioner serve in both of these positions. Is that, is that was seconded by, no?
No, I take it back. I thought it was nominating you.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I thought it was nominating you.
Are you seconding?
Yes.
Seconded by Commissioner Welch.
Can we do that?
A question for the county, Mr. Vice Chair, if I may ask a question of the county attorney. Is that permissible because the person who shall assume the District Two commissioner position doesn't have the ability to decline the motion?
I don't think they can decline anyway.
Well, they're running for this.
I mean, it's permissible. I mean, if a majority of the board votes for it and the person's here, they still have to serve in the capacity because majority of the board voted for it, so.
You don't get choices when we're out here, especially when you're not here. Any other discussion on item?
Just wanted to clarify, I think, I think we're pretty clear on this. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion on item? Seeing none, all is a favor of the motion of 20 K by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries six, zero. Somebody let whoever knows wins District Two race, that they will be serving on the Value Adjustment Board and the Juvenile Justice Circuit Two Advisory Board. Great job, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Next, full board appointment to the LCRDA, and as we take this appointment, want to give big kudos to Commissioner Dozier, who has served on that board for 12 years. I remember when Commissioner Dozier got that appointment, I was so envious because I wanted it, but she got it, and she served, she served us well. You've done a great job, and I appreciate your leadership and all the great things you've done while there, and as being such, I believe it's only, it's only right that you be the one to speak first, and if any commissioner would like to throw their name in that hat up front and let Commissioner Dozier know, I mean, that'd be right, too.
Well, this is board appointments. I'll still be there until November.
Right.
But I won't give a plug for that. The Innovation Park Board is an incredible group. We are doing a lot of amazing work right now, and I hope all of you will consider taking up that appointment in December. I know they will be excited to have another appointee from Leon County. For this item, Mr. Chair or Vice Chair, this is reappointing Ray By, Kevin Graham and Ann Longman to the board. All three have served very well. Kevin Graham is our current chair, so I very happily make a motion to reappoint all three of them to the board.
Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Dozier. Thank you for correcting me on that. To reappoint Kevin Graham, Dr. By, and Ms. Longman, seconded by Commissioner Welch. All those who favor the case by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six, zero. Commissioner Dozier?
Mr. Vice Chair, I do believe our executive director, Ron Miller, is going to not appreciate what I'm about to say, but I'm going to say it anyhow. Ron Miller was hired 10 years ago as an interim executive director for Innovation Park, and under his leadership, the park has transformed. We have grown in staff, the management of the buildings, facilities, the grounds of the park have improved dramatically, and we have added incredible programs helping entrepreneurs, and he works closely with FANU, FSU, and TCC. He will be leaving us in October. Yes, if you had not heard, he has, he's looking for new opportunities, and we wish him all the best, but I would very much like to recognize his incredible work in turning, in helping us turn the park around in the last 10 years at our October 11th meeting.
Commissioner Dozier is there, request for proclamation celebrating 10 years of accomplishments Mr. Miller's contributed to the LC DRA.
And I will drag him in here kicking and screaming. Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Seconded by Commissioner Minor. Any objection?
Thank you.
Short is passed, six, zero. Anything else?
That is it.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll move now on to the final item, item number 33. We'll start off with the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Looks like we are looking for, Mr. Administrator, you want to?
Mr. Chairman, sure. Option one is to appoint one citizen to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals for the remainder of the unexpired term. The eligible applicants are listed before you, John Phelps and Suzanne Ryan.
So it looks like we got two appointments there, both, so we got two appointments, two people. Got to get a motion.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes.
Okay, I move Mr. John Phelps as the permanent member.
I'll second that.
And Ms. Ryan is alternate member.
Second that as well.
All right. Motion made for Mr. John Phelps to be the permanent member, and Ms. Ryan.
Ryan is alternate member.
To be the alternate member. Motion made by Commissioner Cummings, seconded by Commissioner Minor. Any objection? Short is passed. We'll go now to the Career Source Capital Region Board Appointment. Mr. Min, luckily, we got one person here, Cindy Lavoy.
Lavoy?
Lavoy? You want to make that motion? Motion made by Commissioner Welch for Cindy Lavoy for the Career Source Board. Is it seconded by Commissioner Cummings? Any objection? Short is passed, six, zero. We'll move on now to Coke. Looks like Dan Taylor is seeking reappointment, so is Rachel McClure. Is there a motion for reappointment?
Off the board, off the floor.
Motion moved by Commissioner Minor, seconded by Commissioner Welch. Any objection? We're short is passed. Move now right along to the Commission on Women and Girls. Looks like we got all reappointments seeking there.
I move option six.
All right, so we'll move option?
Six.
Six, wait, no, it's, it's.
The rat of fact, three.
Okay. Move option six. Option six has been moved by Commissioner Cummings, or seconded by Commissioner Minor. Any objection? Short is passed unanimously, six, zero. And I believe that's it, right, on that item, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, sir. That concludes your general business agenda.
Okey-dokey. We'll move now right into citizens to be heard on non-agenda items. Do we have any speakers?
We have no speakers.
We have no speakers. Commissioner time. We'll start with our county attorney. We have anything from the attorney?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator.
I have nothing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll go first here, real quick. Just, let's see, pursuant to County Code Section 2670I and placing these correspondence into the public record. I'll hand these to the attorney.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, and now we will go on to our Commissioners. I'll start with Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Two quick things. Everyone here knows very well the accomplishments of Ms. Altamis Barnes. The city of Tallahassee on September 20th at 10:00 a.m. at Smoky Hollow will be dedicating a park in her honor. It'll be the Altamis Pemberton Barnes Park at Smoky Hollow. And so just wanted to make sure everyone here had, I'm a member of the Riley Board, so I'm on the email list, but I want to make sure everyone here heard about that. It's a city function, but of course, I know she'd appreciate us being there to recognize this accomplishment in her honor. So September 20th, 10:00 a.m. at Smoky Hollow. And then the last, the last thing I had was.
Commissioner Minor, before you move on, do you want to ask for a proclamation celebrating that?
Oh, yes, I would, very much so. Great idea. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Welch. Any objection? Short is approved unanimously.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chair. Appreciate it. And the other thing, earlier this, earlier this year, or late last year, this commission approved the budget for the Survive and Thrive Advocacy Center to produce a video of free online, on-demand training to train citizens against human trafficking in Leon County. It's customized for Leon County. That's available now on their website. They do have some nonprofit training that's coming, two dates, this month, for nonprofits specifically. But anybody that's listening now, anybody in Leon County, is free to take this training. It lasts about an hour, and you can take that from your computer. The website is stackpro.org. That's S-T-A-C-P-R-O.org. Again, I said it's free, it's online. At the end of that course completion, you can have a certificate that you can print out to prove your certification of taking the course. But the more people that take this training, the more confident we all are as individuals about seeing signs of potential human trafficking that unfortunately, unfortunately hides in plain sight in this county. If you are more confident about seeing those signs, you're more likely to call in and law enforcement. Law enforcement, when they get our calls, they can do something about it. So if you have a spare hour sometime soon, please take the training, stackpro.org. The more people that take that training, the better we can be at fighting back human trafficking. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I've got a few things here. First, as promised, going to embarrass or welcome a few folks, folks sitting over here with, and I think I have it right, Professor Driscoll, correct? Our students from the Apple Program at FSU. I met one of these students last week, and if I have this right, Professor Driscoll, it is the Applied Politics and Policy Learning Experience. All right, I remembered. So welcome to the county commission meeting. We will have another group of students with us next week. Very glad that you all took time out or were encouraged, told to take time out to come to a county commission meeting, so welcome. The second one, Mr. Vice Chair, and Mr. County Administrator, I may need a little direction on this. I'd like to ask for a proclamation for an Eagle Scout, but I have not heard back from the parents, so I don't, may I ask for a proclamation as a placeholder for October 11th and to be confirmed once I hear back from the parents?
Of course.
Okay. I'd like to make mention of that.
Motion made for a placeholder proclamation for October by Commissioner Dozier, there is seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Welch. Any objection? Motion passed, six, zero. Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you. I'd like to add, board of permission to cover travel for the Florida Regional Planning Council Association Board Meeting, not one of our listed meetings for board travel.
Any objections as such?
Not if they don't have good food, she really shouldn't go.
Motion made by Commissioner Chairman Proctor, seconded by Commissioner Cummings, and no objection.
Thank you. The last item, Mr. Chair, is, it's something that we may need a little bit more time, but I feel like we need to bring it up tonight. You all will remember a little over a year ago when we approved the variance, the signing change for Amazon. We also had a unanimous support for a motion to look at the impacts of the traffic from the Amazon facility about six months after opening.
Yes.
And a couple of other things. One of those was asking the county administrator to talk with the city manager about extending bus service from, or to Amazon facility. From my perspective, and Commissioner Welch, we share a district line in that area, this is incredibly important for two reasons. One, we're going to have over 1,000 employees, and we want folks to have access to these jobs and an efficient way to get there from any part of our community, and we don't currently have bus service extending past Costco on Mahan Drive. Secondly, this is a major traffic impact to the area, so the more people we can encourage to ride the bus, it'll put less stress on the traffic there and impact on the neighborhoods. So over the last few months, we've been receiving really mixed messages. Mayor Daley has said that, yes, they are extending bus service. Mr. County Administrator, I warned you, I'm going to have to put you on the spot here. We talked about this several weeks ago, and I'd like to know if you have, since that time, heard anything from the city manager confirming or giving any additional details about extending bus service to Amazon?
I have not.
Okay. So that means that's no communication.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. So we're in a, we're in a situation here where we've got Amazon opening in a couple of months, and I am, I'm truly hopeful that other things happening right now are not getting in the way of a really good and necessary policy discussion and collaboration between the city and county. I'm just going to, I got to put that out there right now because this is really confusing. This is something that benefits residents, city and county. It benefits our transportation, infrastructure in the neighborhoods out there, as I said. I also took note recently that the city's about to come into some money from the federal government for 17 new buses, so I think there should be able to accommodate that. I'm not sure what exactly to do at this point, except for to raise it publicly, and that's why I brought it into this meeting, because this was county commission issue, it was something that we all talked about, we thought was important, and I truly hope we can encourage our city colleagues to get on board and get bus service established before Amazon opens for those employees. The last thing I wanted to mention here, I wanted to ask about, and I'll give the county administrator a second.
Could I, if you move in from the issue you were?
No, well, I had one additional question about the bus service, but.
Okay, I'd like to comment on your bus service observation.
Mr. Chair, you can go in if you want, but I had one more question for the county administrator on this subject. So not only have we, you know, have we taken up this issue, but it's my understanding, Mr. County Administrator, my memory, that part of the development process, the review process, required Amazon to build a bus shelter at their facility. Is that correct?
It's my recollection, yes.
So we have asked them to build a bus shelter, and we don't, we have not confirmed that bus service will go out there, so they are interested. that bus service will go out there, so they are interested in having bus service. Um, have we communicated this with Amazon, do they know the status of this, or is that a different direction that we could talk with them about? Um, maybe they could encourage the city?
Yes, I think, I think they're in the same position that we're in, they're, they have not been made aware of the city's decision on that.
Okay, but they're, I mean, we're gonna have a bus stop, we're gonna be ready to go as soon as, or if and when the city gets on board.
It's my understanding.
Okay, alright, um, again, I, I don't have a motion here or anything else. This is a County Commission, uh, an issue that we took up as the board, so I thought it was important to bring it in here, and, um, I commit to do everything I can possibly do to get bus service out there for the employees, but I hope that we will all lean in on this with our city colleagues. Mr. Chair, that's the last, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Administrator, I think, you know, that's one thing, we've heard over and over again, how imperative bus service is, uh, out to Amazon, at least, can you bring us about it back, uh, have a conversation with the city manager, just bring back a status report on what's going on out there as far as, um, if they're making that decision or not, or where they are in decision-making, or even an email or something, because Commissioner Dozier bring up a valid point, this, this...
Mr. Vice Chair, uh, just to get the county administrator out of the hot seat?
Mm-hmm.
He's done all that. He has reached out to the city manager, so, um, I mean, I think we can do it again. We bring it up publicly, we can do it again, um, maybe this will help.
How, how about this then? I'm, I'm, I'm hesitant, but it's important. Uh, Mr. Chair, how do you feel about, um, sending a letter from you to the city, to the City Commission, uh, expressing the importance that we feel like there, it is of having bus service out to, um, the Amazon Fulfillment Center?
Thank you, Mr., uh, Vice Chairman, um, is deeper than that. Um, when we did Falls Chase Development, um, citizens were angry that, that Walmart was coming to their community, and they expressed that they didn't want the kind of people bust, uh, in their community coming to Walmart. And one of the reasons that we don't have bus service to the east side on Mayhem is because the citizenry, um, didn't, you know, didn't want who the bus bring. Um, I'm not sure if that kind of resistance, um, eighteen years or however many years later continues. Um, one of the reasons we don't have bus service, uh, going up Thomasville Road is a similar thought. Um, citizens don't want, um, those people who ride the bus up in their neighborhoods. So, what we don't see, um, on the scene, and what we don't see, what the city, uh, is, um, really dealing with in public, is, um, pushback from people who don't want, uh, bus riders in their neighborhood. So, certainly a letter, uh, would not hurt anything, but for those of us who've been around for a minute, um, have seen northern, um, development, uh, who've seen eastern development, we kinda know the reason behind the reason on why there is no bus service. Maybe that's changed.
I understand.
Mr. Vice Chair, if I may, how to come here?
Uh, before you speak, Commissioner Dozier, so, I think what you bring up is something, is, is a very important issue that we have in our community, and though we bring it up, what I, what I'm trying to get to here is...
The actions.
I don't want to just bring it up and there, and there not be any action behind it, or any, any, any sense of urgency behind, even if, even if, even if we don't know what the City Commission is thinking, or, or the administrator hasn't heard from the manager, I'm trying to figure out, how can we, is it a mayor chair, like, what, 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 what do we do from this spot to, to kinda get that ball rolling? Because one thing that we have to understand, the city does run the buses, right? And, and that fulfillment center is in the unincorporated area, yeah?
Well...
I mean, but, but...
If I may, the Antique Car Museum is in the city limits.
Right.
So, I mean, to say the fulfillment center is in the unincorporated area, it's, it's a few hundred feet, probably, if you go to the bus stop from the city limits.
I get it, but, but a lot of thing, uh, one of, I guess, I guess, we've had this conversation on other unincorpor, we, it's not just, this, this conversation about bus services extending to the unincorporated area isn't new. You know, I remember some years back, when you were fighting to get bus services to the library out there, and one of the things was, is that, okay, it, it's the increased cost of sending out there, and one of the things we hear time and time again is, there's an increased cost to send the bus out to, out to unincorporated areas. I don't think that's, I don't want that to be, I don't want that to be the reason. What, what is, what, what do we have to do? Whether it's city, county working together, or whatever it is, bus service has to go to that fulfillment center, it's not, it's not even an option. So, how do we get in a place where we make it happen? And, and, and quite frankly, complaints and conversation ain't really gonna do it. You know, I'm, so I'm trying to, as we sit here, talk about it, I'm trying to figure out, how do we get to a place where we're having a conversation, where, where we see some hope, and it actually happening? I mean, is the board saying it? I mean, he said, the mayor said it, but is, is there something that the board said? I know I've had a, a personal conversation with Commissioner, Commissioner Richardson, and he has said that he had hope to make it happen as well. Um, and, but, it's not encouraging, you know, we, when your county administrator says he's not hearing anything back. So, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, I don't want to leave this point without having some kind of movement forward on it.
Well, I'll say this, Mr. Dozier...
Mr. Vice Chair, I, I will say, I think your, your idea of a letter is a great idea, and, I mean, let's just, I'm gonna go ahead and drop the elephant in the room here, this is very odd for me to bring this up. I mean, I could've dropped this on social media four weeks ago, because it came up in candidates forums, but this is a County Commission issue, this is a city and county issue, this is something this board took up, and it is important for us to take it up. Um, it, this is about getting the job done, it's not about scoring points or anything like that, right? So, that is exactly why I brought it up here, so I appreciate the creativity, because I also know there's other members of the City Commission who do want to get this done, Commissioner Richardson, Commissioner Porter, they both express this, and I'm guessing Commissioner Matt Lowen, um, Williams Cox would support it as well. So, so, yeah, I'm just trying to light a fire, because Amazon is coming online soon, they're going to have more than a thousand employees, and we need to have access. So, I, I would absolutely support the letter to the full City Commission, because that, maybe that will encourage some of our colleagues there to ask their manager the question. Um, this has just gotten stuck, um, and that's why I wanted to take our county administrator out of the hot seat here, is because we did what we normally do, we asked our county administrator to reach out to the city manager, that's appropriate, but if that ain't working, we gotta take it to the board. So, um, I think the letter is a great idea, and I think, um, any, you know, I'd encourage citizens to reach out to the City Commission as well, this has gotta happen. The last thing I'm gonna say is, yes, you're right, and to the chairman's point, they're having questions decades ago about extending bus service to different parts of the community, I don't hear that anymore. Um, but when we did talk about bus service to a public facility, the library, because when we moved it from Appalachia Parkway to Pedrick, we lost public bus service to a public facility.
Mm-hmm.
Sure, city came back and said, county, you can pay for it. You know, we, we didn't push it that far at that time, but if we look down Mayhem now, it is now in the city's interest, they run the bus service, they get state, federal dollars for this, as well as local dollar, it is in their interest, and they do have multiple, I mean, they've got a public library, they've got FAMU, School of Agriculture at the Vineyards, and they've got Amazon, I mean, there, there are multiple reasons to run a bus down Mayhem now. So, I wasn't gonna expand this conversation that far, but from my perspective, it is in the city's interest, it is perfectly logical, and it's something that we've heard city commissioners want, so, yes, I think we should encourage our friends over there to get this done, thank you.
So, we're looking at a, a letter from the chairman, uh, expressing our interest in seeing bus services to the Amazon Fulfillment Center, uh, and within that letter, just an, uh, request for an update, or they are, on where the commission is and considering such, is that fair?
No.
Okay.
I, I, I don't want my name on this letter, I really don't. Um, how far is Amazon, uh, from here? Is it about, Commissioner Cummings, you live out in that area, how far is the Amazon Center from, from, uh, where we are?
From Walmart, from Walmart.
I mean, from our building?
Maybe five miles. Yes.
About, what, five to ten miles?
Yeah, about five, five, ten miles.
Five to ten miles.
Five to ten mile.
Mm-hmm. But, but bus service does go to Walmart, Walmart, so there is bus service at Walmart.
Well, I've been trying to get the city to run sewer pipes, uh, two to three miles.
Mr. Chairman, it's a different pot of money, it's completely a different pot of money, this is money dedicated, like I said, the feds are giving them money for seventeen buses.
Look, this board right here have not gotten with me to write the city a joint letter for sewer. So, why you wanna, don't put nothing on my name to ask the city to run bus lines, uh, eight miles down the road, ten miles down the road, sewer is down there, sidewalks is down there, Amazon came in this town knowing it wasn't no bus service, we put two million dollars on the table, we knew it wasn't no bus service, so it ain't no emergency to me tonight. What is an emergency to me is health and safety, and, and you all have never, ever collaborated that we need to get together and get some sewer into the south regions inside the urban service area, that's less than three miles from this building. No, I don't want my name like that.
Well, Mr. Chairman...
No, don't miss the chairman, me, put it on your name.
You could at this moment, ask for the letter to send to the letter.
You, you, you put your name on that right there, the city don't answer me, they have not answered the administrator, this is the administrator of the whole world. It ain't like he dumb, it ain't like he's a Rudy Pooh, this is the best administrator in the world, and they won't answer him. I have not gotten, that's why I wrote the governor today, asking for help to get sewer down to this part of the, the county. I don't get this, and everybody just, oh, let's just get the file in, let's just send the city a letter. Send the city a letter for some sewer relief, so that we won't have segregated sewer systems that we have here. We have a separate and unequal sewer system in this county, maintained by that city government. Maybe Dozier, you would do something different, bring me some sewer, but I don't, don't put my name on no letter, no, for this right here, you put your name on a letter with me to go down there to end the segregated sewer system, that's what we need to do. I don't, I don't hear nothing else about this, on my name, put your own name on there.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes.
If you would be so willing, may I make a motion for the Vice Chair to send the City Commission a letter on behalf of the board?
Separate and unequal is what we have.
Mr. Chairman.
Recognizing that we, we understand there's broad agreement between City and County Commission, um, to extend bus service, we are not single issues, certainly, we talked about septic and sewer a lot earlier, we've accomplished a lot of last...
We have never written a letter to the city.
Mr. Chairman.
We have never written that letter. And that letter is more important to me than a bus going down the street down to Mayhem.
Item, and then we'll take up your item?
That's what I'm telling you right now.
Finish this item, and then we'll take up your item?
This part of it.
Can we finish this item and take up your item? Thank you, sir.
I thought she had finished.
No, she's not finished.
If she just be the mayor, then leave some sewer down the street.
Can we finish this item and take up your item? Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Dozier, that a letter be sent to the city to look at bus service sent to the fulfillment center from the Vice Chair, with the Vice Chair's signature on it. Motion's been made by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Minor, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries five to one. Now, if you don't ask for a letter in this moment, all, all, all the stuff that you just said to me is totally irrelevant, if right now in this moment, you don't ask for a letter, fine. Is there a motion for a letter from, 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 from the County Commission with the chairman's signature on it, inquiring or, 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 or expressing the support of the county to have sewer run...
Inside the USA.
Inside the urban services area.
Mr. Vice Chair, may I ask the question? What would be, oh, I can't.
Is there a motion to that effect?
I make that motion, Mr. Dozier.
Motion's been made by, by Chairman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dozier, Commissioner Cummings.
Oh, no, I'm good now.
You sure?
Okay.
Commissioner Minor?
So long as it has the chairman's signature on that letter, I'll support.
Nope, nope, my, my signature would be on the letter.
But the motion was from the chair.
I'm talking about the sewer letter, the sewer letter, that's what I'm talking about.
I ain't trying to fight with you about that. Alright, so look, we got a motion on the floor, made by the chairman, seconded by Commissioner Dozier, that we send a letter to the city expressing the interest, uh, or the, the interest in the county, that the city runs sewer south inside of the urban services area, is that correct?
Past Wilson Green Neighborhood, that is correct, inside of the urban services area, we need not to be racially segregated in sewer, which is being maintained currently. We want the health and sanitary standards of our side to be just like way down Mayhem Drive, we're trying to take, we done took everything down there, Mr. Vice Chairman, everything.
Thank you, sir.
We want the same thing to come right down the street, few red lights down the street from the City Hall.
Motion's been made by the chair, seconded by Commissioner Dozier, any objection to the letter? Seeing none, motion carries six to zero, Commissioner Dozier, thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for navigating all of that. Um, the last one, I hope will be really simple, congratulations to Keith Bowers on our newly, uh, appointed Director of Office Economic Vitality, truly looking forward to seeing him at the next O E V meeting, I know he was in the audience before, I don't believe he's still here, but, um, I'm really excited about Keith joining, um, us at O E V, and I also want, oh, look, Keith, you're still here, there you are, hiding around the corner, congratulations, sir, and, um, I guess I could have also said, this also means we will lose you as the alternate for FAMU on the Innovation Park Board, and I want to thank you for your long-term service, I think we might have been there about the same amount of time, it's been twelve years, right? Um, we're one of three who've been there that long, so thank you for your service in Innovation Park, and look forward to seeing you at the Blueprint meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner, anything else? See what you started, let me see what you started. Alright, Commissioner Welsh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, I would like to, just real briefly, that's all I got, um, I'd like to ask for an agenda item to come back to, uh, I had a constituent contact me about adding a streetlight at a bus stop in the unincorporated area, specifically Rifle Avenue and Crump Road, and, um, I think the board's policy is currently not to do that, but I would like to have an agenda item, maybe explore doing that on an as-needed basis, um, because, you know, we got kids, uh, waiting out at bus stops in the darkness in the rural area, um, and I think it would be beneficial if we put a streetlight there.
Interesting.
So, um, just, uh, an agenda item from the county administrator to kinda look at that, uh, give me some options, cost, you know, perspectives, things like that, uh, as opposed to just waive, asking for us to waive the rule in this one instance, I'd like to look at it holistically.
That's good. Um, everybody understand the motion on the floor, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Minor, any objection? So it is, uh, passed six zero, Mr. Administrator, you got direction on that? Okay.
Thank you, and then, uh, just wanted to congratulate our tourism team on, uh, winning the bid for the twenty twenty-six, uh, World Cross Country Championships, uh, Charles High School, I have a lot of students who are, uh, very good and aggressive cross-country runners, and, uh, very into that sport, and, you know, we've won many state championships, and so I think this further cements, uh, Tallahassee as the cross-country capital of the world, we got, uh, capital of the country, at least. Um, and, uh, I just want to congratulate Kerry Post and, uh, and the folks on the, uh, T D C, um, Mr. Chairman as well, for helping secure that, and, uh, that's all I got, thank you.
Alright, Commissioner Cummings?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, I too would like to, uh, congratulate Mr. Bowers on his new position with the O E V, I think he probably left, but, uh, we're very proud, very proud of him and his, oh, he's still there, okay. He's still there, uh, but we're very proud of him, and I know that he will do a great job in that position. Uh, but I would like to ask the Commission for a proclamation for a very phenomenal young lady who was a senior at Rickards High School, her name is Amaya Wayman, and two years ago, almost two years ago, Amaya initiated, um, a concept called Girls' Flow through the Leon County School Board Foundation, and as a result of her efforts in raising money, um, there are feminine hygiene project, a feminine hygiene product in every high school, in every middle school in Leon County, in the, in the bathroom, okay? She also, uh, has raised funds so that girls who don't have access, you know, for economical reason, to feminine hygiene project, uh, products can also take those products at home, uh, as well. But she is, uh, like I said, she's a great young lady, but she's also the Student Government Association President at Rickards High School, and she's on the school board as the District Advisory Council Representative for the entire Leon County School District, so, I move that we, uh, present this young lady with the proclamation... So I move that we, uh, present this young lady with the proclamation at our November meeting that we also invite members of Leon County School Board and the superintendent to be in attendance as well.
Motion made by Commissioner Cummings, seconded by Commissioner Dozier. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioner Cummings, thank you so much for this great proclamation. Um, I was at the Girl Flow event this weekend. Amaya was there. They, they took an incredible amount of donations and she was also recognized as an Oasis Trailblazer this spring. Um, their young woman represented, so fabulous idea. Thank you for doing this. She does, well deserved.
Any objection? Show us passion unanimously. Commissioner Cummings.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, as you all are aware, county chairperson of our board, um, is left to negotiate and to make a recommendation of a 5% or whatever recommendation for adjustments for our county administrator and our county attorney. I'd like, uh, to seek your permission and endorsement of my sitting down with our county attorney to look at, um, maybe something that does something different than what we do every year, the one, two, three, um, given the Herculean achievement of Vince Long. Um, next week early, he goes to receive an award. Um, only one person in the world gets per annum. And I think that in light of, uh, the report that has been made, uh, the reports over the years that have been made, uh, certainly he works within the parameters of a contract. But certainly he exceeds, um, all measurable, um, evaluations of just how effective he's been. I seek your permission to, um, sit down with the county attorney and perhaps to bring, uh, to our awareness, because I don't want to alone. But I think that we should look at, um, several options of how we might, um, compensate him to the level of proficiency and efficiencies that he brings to our, our community. And, um, I definitely will have my eyes open that folk don't be bothering with him. And, um, you know, get that kind of recognition, everybody wants him. But we want to make sure that we show our affection, our love and appreciation, respect for all that he's wrought for our community. So I don't know if that's a motion, Vice Chairman, on how we treat that.
No, Mr. Chairman, how would, how would we handle that?
Uh, it would be authorization for the chairman, uh, to consult with me about, uh,
Options.
Restructuring compensation for the county administrator.
Would that be a motion?
Yes.
Uh, would it be an agenda item or would it have to be unanimous in this moment?
Would it be like option one, two, a tiered approach to how we might approach?
If it would be a future agenda item, it just requires a majority. If it's action in the moment on something specific, it would require unanimous.
Would the future agenda item be on authorization or would the future agenda item be on? Tell me, tell me a little bit about, the future agenda item would be on what? I just want to make sure we're in the right, we're in the right path, posture, because.
Alternatives regarding proposed changes to compensation would be what the agenda item would be about for board consideration and action.
All right. Uh, motion made by the chairman for, for such agenda item. Is there a second?
Mr. Vice Chair, I have a question.
Yes. I'll save for discussion.
Okay. Um, I think we, uh, expressed a tremendous amount of love and support for our county administrator earlier during the, um, maybe, you know, for his purposes, a little too much um, during the annual report, uh, maybe a little more than he would hope during all of our discussions recently. So I think, um, Ms. County Administrator, I'm going to trust you understand, um, how much we value your, um, work for Leon County. Um, I think, I can't support the motion right now without understanding a bit more. And I wonder if there's a slightly different approach before we get to an agenda item whereby the county attorney could email us what the current scope is, kind of bring us all up to speed and what we may be talking about.
Yes.
And we could have some conversations with county administrator and county attorney individually and then take this issue up and request an agenda item at the October 11th meeting, should we choose to do that. I'm just, I, I need to learn a little bit more.
So how about this, how about this? I think, Mr. Administrator, we have an item coming back at the October meeting to address some of the stuff.
Yes, let me, if I can help here a little, it may help all sides. Uh, we have an explicit policy at Leon County. And, and again, I totally appreciate the chairman, but it may help us from, from going down a road here. It may not be necessary. It may, everyone may be able to accomplish, you know, what they want. The, the policy provides that, um, as of tomorrow, uh, and it, it's date certain, that as of tomorrow, you all get evaluations, my evaluations. Uh, all of the commissioners conduct their evaluations of me, obviously, on, on a number of criteria, which results in, in a numerical score. And, uh, and of course, as you know, we bring an agenda item back, uh, at that time. Uh, the policy provides, reflects my contract as well as the county attorney's contract that we are eligible to receive, um, what county employees receive. But then an amount up to and over that, that is recommended, uh, by the, by the chairman. And again, I don't think that that's perhaps different from, from, from what we may be trying to achieve. And again, that's, that's reflected in policy, comes back to the board. And, and as you know, oftentimes, what comes back from the chairman and myself is, hey, we decided not to do that this year. We'll bring, I'll, I'll meet with the chairman, again, with the help of the, the, the county attorney. And we could very easily bring back something like that, again, consistent with, with the policy that I think achieves, again, what, what everyone's trying to achieve.
Mr. Chair, if you could, uh, take that motion back, allow the county administrator work through the agenda item that we have on the table. I think that'd be most desirable. I don't, what I don't want is, I don't want, uh, six, one, five, one, you know, four, three vote on something that should be celebrated if, if there's a way to get this done without us interfering with the process.
And, and Mr. Vice Chair, I would just say that it sounds like what the chairman, what you're asking for is already
Yes.
the policy.
Yeah.
So we don't need to make a motion here or do any, that, that's why I was a little confused in wanting some more information before moving forward, because we hadn't taken it up like this in the past. So you already will be in that conversation, Mr. Chair, with county administrator, county attorney, and we'll see what the results are come October.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, good with that?
Um, yeah, but what, uh, the administrator has laid out is the fact that the county chairman would singularly make a recommendation to this board. Uh, this county chairman desired the input of this board with respect to a range, which we would make recommendation. Um, reason being, um, we don't get the chance to talk. I mean, we can't, uh, chassis won't let us talk. County chairman won't let us talk. Um, my thinking, your thoughts, um, again, relative, what's a lot of complaints for 30,000 households? 300, 800, 1200, I don't know. So we're, we have the world's best, uh, most recognized, um, county administrator. And realizing that as we come to the end of the year, this is a function of the chairperson uh, on an island, isolated from you, uh, but to come back here to be shot down or up or what have you. The other failure of our process of evaluating, uh, the county administrator and for all the policy students who are here, hey, um, one of, one of the, one of the deficiencies that we have is that we evaluate, uh, our county administrator, our county attorney individually on a sheet of paper. There has never, in my 25 years, has been a group conversation to evaluate the CEO of county government. So it's presumed you sign a sheet of paper and if the numbers, uh, zero to five, uh, speak well enough, then you recommend a, um, merit increase for county administrator, uh, some, somewhere proportion to, you know, that three, that four, that five, whatever it means to who? To that particular chairperson. Okay? Um, I have asked and years past have given up asking that we have a group, a corporate review of the chair, whereas we gather, you know, in a workshop format to say what we're pleased, what we're not, what we're, you know. So I've never, ever heard the thinking of another county commissioner that I've known about 17, 18, but I've never heard their individual thinking except to read, you know, A, one, five on this, seven. I don't even feel them out like that. I don't feel those out because it dumbs down to me, uh, true or false? Is George Washington's gray horse gray? Black, brown, whatever? It's dumb. It's a dumb evaluation. It nowhere reflects what we evaluating. Nowhere gets to the detail of a document like this. It nowhere gets to the detail of operating budget that we, uh, uh, have to deal with. We just fill out a little sheet of paper and put a check mark. That's amazing for the complexities of what we deal with. I've not been able to awaken our board to a different kind of approach. Um, but hearing where our board is tonight, um, I will accept, uh, what your, uh, seemingly be direction that we will get together and I'll make a recommendation to the board and we'll gnaw on that bone when it comes back. I withdraw that motion.
I appreciate that. I do think, Commissioner, what, what you're talking about is more of a poly, is policy issue that of how we do our, our, uh, our evaluations that we can have in, in, in a, another, you know, another time, but in another agenda item. Because to, to think about changing that on the spot does get a little bit, a little bit complex. I kind of think about Commissioner Dozier on this one. Because it's like the, the policy that you described is totally different than what we've been doing for how long now? So i- if we want to have that policy discussion, maybe at some point you bring it up as a policy discussion for, for, for future evaluations. But thank you for withdrawing your motion to kind of, we trust the process and, and, and that you will bring back what you think is adequate. And then we'll have a, a public discussion over how we feel about, uh, the numbers that you bring back. So I, I appreciate that. You got anything else, Mr. Chair?
Oh, absolutely. Thank you very much. I want to start with the hard stuff first. Um, I want to salute staff for that picture right there on the wall, the 911 day of service. Uh, it was a wonderful event. Uh, our staff, that's, want to thank you for the work that was done. Uh, that's the Crossway Church and, and that surrounding community. Uh, the outreach effort, the representation of Leon County, uh, on that day, uh, was excellent. And I want to thank staff again for each of the volunteers, uh, who served in that, uh, community. I want to seek a proclamation, uh, honoring Mr. Eddie Jackson, uh, and Mr. George Thompson uh, for their presence and the work that they do to inspire, uh, our community. I make that as a motion.
Motion made by, by the chairman to, to, for proclamation, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Cummings, any objection? Motion carries six, zero. Mr. Chairman?
Um, thank you. I'd like a, a board proclamation, um, honoring, uh, a fabulous Sunday school teacher, uh, former school librarian and my mother on her 85th birthday, uh, next, uh, next month. And like a proclamation honoring her 85th birthday.
I dare you all to vote against this proclamation. Proclamation been made by Commissioner Pride to honor his mom. Uh, is there a second to that proclamation? Seconded by, uh, Commissioner Welch. Any objection? Show his passion unanimously. Congratulations to your mother.
Thank you so much. That, that was meaningful. Um, and then I wanted to ask, um, the word Amazon came up, um, today, um, a couple of times. And I wanted to really find out, um, speaking of reports from, reports from, um, on the Waste Pro.
Mm hmm.
But I've received reports that Amazon, um, has more, uh, contractors from outside of our community, uh, that there are no really minority, uh, uh, local minorities on the ground. Uh, a lot of, um, Hispanic workers, but the black workers, um, the promises that were made about these jobs, who's going to get them? Uh, the business community being integrated into the building of this project, um, those things. I, I would love to get a, um, a tangible breakout and maybe, um, Mr. Bowers', um, office is the one who should be, to give us what are the numbers. Um, I get complaints on this one. I don't hear from Waste Pro, but I have heard of, uh, how disappointing it has been that, uh, our local vendors, uh, have been shut out. Uh, our local workers, I haven't heard no buzz about, you know, they was hiring. You heard anything about people was hiring at Amazon? I ain't. Um, I'm not sure when and how they going to advertise, uh, where you put it, in the newspaper, is it online? Uh, I would love to get a report, um, because when we put that $2 million, uh, to go after a $1.4 trillion company, um, you know, that was an expensive blind date. And at $1.4 trillion, uh, I don't even know why we had to pay for the date. I still don't understand that. And then, um,
Wait, Mr. Administrator, can you, can you, 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 do you have a way to get that information to us?
Yes, we, we can provide that information if that's the direction of the board.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. We, we really need to look at that before we pin roses on Amazon. And whatever their commitments were to us, uh, that needs to be honored. We need to know, track where are we right now, uh, with respect to MBE, local, uh, vendors being involved, blase, blase, blah, blah, blah. Then finally, um, I wanted to, uh, share with the community, uh, that I will host a South Side Candidates Forum for, um, various races, uh, probably a two-part series for candidates who are vying for public office locally, um, a couple of state seats. And those announcements will be coming, uh, probably next week. So looking forward to, um, the community, uh, learning, uh, who wants to end, um, who wants to end, um, uh, sewer segregation and those kinds of issues. Those things being said, Mr. Chairman, I have no other comments other than to say thank you all for a great meeting, super meeting, uh, Commissioner Dozier. Um, it, 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 it tugs on my heartstrings, um, to note that some things you may not be around on, on this day as for. And, um, to you, uh, we say, uh, thank you for the years of service, um, at Long Hall. You've done on the, uh, research board. Um, I, I just see it as your board. I mean, I, I think about it, you're the first name that comes to my mind. And, um, you've been, um, you've been a bulldog on it. I mean, just staying on top of things. And your energy, uh, I pray that your successor, uh, will have the kind of, uh, studious, uh, energetic, um, um, and just kicktailness that you bring. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We are adjourned.